Good evening. This is December 12, 2022, 5:00 PM, and this is the Mendon Select Board meeting. First on our agenda is to add or delete any items to the agenda. The only thing I have to add is we have update on numbers for number four, administrative matters, A. Now it's when I make the motion. We have an additional check warrant to add to the agenda with what's on for A. And that is in the amount of $8,006.94. So that's added to the agenda. Anything you have to add or delete? Make sure we got everything. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the update on the amounts for the check warrants in the addition of a warrant in the amount of $8,006.94. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. All right, motion passes. Just under announcements, our next meetings are going to be on December 19 of this month, and then the one after that will be January 9, 2023. Probably, we have scheduled for the January 9 meeting, and it might go into the second one to work on our ARCA funds and get most of those allocated, not all of them. Want to go back to... We're still on announcements, back to A. The Select Board and the Men and Planning Commission are accepting letters of interest for zoning administrator. And also, the Select Board is accepting letters of interest for the opening on the Select Board. And that opening would go until beginning of March 2023. And also, starting of March of 2023, there are two openings on the Select Board. We're looking for individuals with the interest in that. We come into the office, get a petition, and on the petition would tell you how many signatures are required, and the date you have to get it back in. So we really encourage anyone listening to this to think about serving on the Select Board. Let's see what I missed. All right, that's it for announcements. Under administrative matters, matters, the first one is our check warrants. So I'll make a motion to approve orders for $600 And the one we added is $8,006.94 in payroll of $11,283.48. All those in favor, aye? Passes. We have the minutes of November 28, 2022, which we received in advance. Any changes? Very good. Okay, motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2022 as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. All right, we're at public comment. Justin, any public comment?
No.
Big note, no one else is here. We move right along, but if someone else comes, we'll open it back up at my discretion. Somebody's coming in the door. I'm gonna hold a minute. The Bagleys are here.
Did you hear that, Sarah?
It's Red and Jennifer Bagley are here.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're at actually a public comment.
Oh, we are.
If anyone has anything.
It's very nice to come down to somewhere in town who we never before. And the men who goes in well, Paul, because that's not the case.
All right, you guys all set or anything else? Or, okay? Just going back to announcements. We did have a couple of meetings with cabinet members from Governor Scott's cabinet. One was with Secretary of the Agency of Transportation, Joe Flynn, which I'll report on later. And Fred might want to jump in on that. We also had a meeting with Secretary of the Agency on natural resource, Julie Moore. And I don't know if Fred wants to do any update on that one or not really. It was just a... Yeah, okay. Just to let you know, we didn't have meetings. And we did have a meeting at the Opera House at the Hub with the cabinet members, well attended. I think the room was full. Lot of urban money from different departments. And I took some notes on that. Only thing that really caught my mind that I have to write down is they're looking to have electric vehicle charging stations on major routes, which would be Route 4, Route 7, every 25 miles eventually. So I don't know, future then may be something of interest for our park and ride. There are two types of charging stations. One is a rapid charge. I think that's what they're looking at. And the other is, I think it's a longer, maybe like a four-hour charge. But that's down the road, so to speak. All right, under, we're down to number six, business. And we have an amendment to the Rutland Regional Planning Contract for the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update. And so, just before I read this, our contract with Stephanie Burke, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, ends December 31, 2022. But since this will be going to FEMA 2023, we need to extend the time, not the amount, but the time until it's done with FEMA. So it's kind of a formality that this is before. So with the, it's amendment number one, Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Town of Mendon. It is hereby agreed by between the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, thereafter called the RRBC, and the Town of Mendon, that the agreement effective March 28, 2022 shall be modified as follows. General terms and conditions. The period of performance under this agreement shall be extended to May 1, 2023, or the completion of the tasks detailed in the scope over whichever is sooner. Except as modified by this agreement, all other provisions of the original agreement shall remain in full force in effect. So, yeah, so that's only... What it is basically again is extending the time until we're done with FEMA, both Mendon and RRBC. And it does not change the amount of the contract. So making motion to approve amendment one to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. And we have to back up. I'm gonna do some signing here. Next on our agenda is a fiscal year... There's a state homeland, state homeland security grant reallocation. The application was due Friday, and it was sent in, and we've received notification that they have received it. For some information, it's the FY 2020, 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Reallocation Application. It was submitted again last Friday, and as I said earlier, they notified that they've received it. This grant centered around cybersecurity. We submitted $14,158 to purchase laptops, application software, antivirus software, a shredder, and a projector to be used to protect against cyber attacks and contribute to the secure operation of the local emergency operations center. The computers will also be available for secure operations of municipal government. Well, that's an announcement, and I did sign that. And it's been sent out. They just got an email today that they have extended the timeline on this. So Sarah and Limi are looking into to see if there's anything additional they want to add to the grant application and the process of pulling that. If it has to be a separate, separate from this grant, or if it can be an amendment to this grant. So that's, that's an announcement. Next on the agenda is the Otter Creek Communication Union District. Our primary consultant, Amanda O'Connor, who we've worked with in the past at RRBC, is taking a full-time job and will be leaving Otter Creek CUD at the end of this month. And she will be with us in January as a volunteer. So we have a RFP. We're in the RFP process for a project management services. So we'll be adding that to our Facebook page. I'm on that committee for finding a new project management. We have a meeting Wednesday, the Executive Committee, and we will be discussing partnering with someone, an ISP, Internet Service Provider. But I see that's under executive session because it is a contract negotiation. Update on Otter Creek. The next one is we had a meeting recently up here on Route 4 where the Green Mountain National Forest, Inger Lake's buildings being built in the parking lot. In attendance was Secretary of the Agency of Transportation, Joe Flynn, Fred Bagley, Megan Smith, Senator Brian Collmore, and myself. And Fred did the whole presentation explaining the sculpting study that we're involved in. That's moving along fairly well. We did our ranking, looking at three, got it down to three at the ready engineering consulting terms. And now we picked one according to our scores. And then we're moving forward with that. But in the meeting with Joe, Joe Flynn, Fred did a really good presentation explaining the whole history of Route 4, safety issues and concerns, what we're looking for in the sculpting study and to wait to see where it's going to take us. Joe Flynn did remind us that Route 4, of course, all of Route 4 are going through Mendon, is a state highway maintained by the state, but is also a U.S. federal highway, which has different criteria than just a state highway. And anything with the designation of U.S. highway is meant to move traffic from east to west or north to south, depending which way the road goes. But he talked, we talked about the village speed limit, which currently is 45, which sometimes is just a guideline. Same with the 50 going up the mountain and back down. And Joe Flynn highly recommended that the Select Board write and send a letter, email as an attachment directed to him asking for a reduction of the speed limit in the Village District. So that's on our agenda tonight for us to vote on. We have to vote on it to send it. I would write the letter and then send it to Val and to Sarah for editing. And upon approval and editing, I'll send it up as an attachment. Joe sent a final email address to all of us, you know, thanking for meeting with him. I believe he came down from South Yarol just for that meeting. He was returning back to South Yarol. So we kind of privileged to have him come down and listen to us. And in the email thanking us, he reminded the Select Board to get that letter to him. Fred, you can correct me, but they meet, the committee that he chairs meets periodically. They'll be meeting four times a year. They'll be meeting this winter. That's why if we have this letter there, they'll discuss it. He said they go on file, but once it's in file, it's always there that we're interested in reducing the speed limit in the Village. The process is they will send down technicians and set up whatever they do for a survey in the Village District, really checking off the speeds. Even if it comes in with 80% of what the speed limit is now, the committee can overrule the report, the technical report, and they can address the Select Board's letter and approve the speed reduction. So they have that authority. Fred, you want to clarify on that?
It was really a remarkable meeting that this gentleman would come down, you know, from his position and track from South Yarol to Mendon and then back to his office on Hillier to listen to our concerns. And he appreciated the fact we're going through the sculpting study process. But he said he don't have to wait for that to try your defenses to reduce the speed. They may or may not send technicians down. They, this three-person board, which includes him and Lee, somebody from the state police. And I forget who the third person was. It was a sentence, an established by statute board who reduce speed limit requests from throughout the state. Obviously, with the staff input and whatnot. But they, they can send technicians or choose not to send technicians if they think it's obvious or whatever. The technicians do some sort of speed study. And they, he says it's a rule of thumb. If ET5% of the traffic is within five miles an hour of the posted speed limit, then they think that's probably about the right speed limit. It's kind of their criteria. So if people are going anywhere from 40 to 50 in our 45 mile an hour zone at an 85% rate, then that's probably about as good as you can do with enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. But he also said that technicians might come back with a certain number of numbers, but this board can make their own decision when they know about all the concerns, like a commercial district or a historic district or so forth. So he was very encouraging to give her shot. And as indicated, they may say, we need more information to come back at the sculpting study. Or I doubt if they'll approve it on the first call, frankly. But it's been almost 30 years since it's been looked at. So I think it's, he seemed to think it was a very worthwhile thing to pursue. So I'm glad the Select Board is willing to at least make the effort and make the application, see what their response is.
So in that meeting, I don't know if we ever came up with a speed that we would be looking at and thinking 40 miles per hour in the Village, that's probably the best we can look for.
Yeah.
So I think that's what the, that's what the letter will stay.
Can I ask one question? I wonder if we have statistics about the, in this area, with how many accidents there were in the days of Bob Sertif, telling people he stopped. We all remember those days because he was very conscientious. And so if there were some statistical information about how often that speeding seems to be a problem or could cause some problems, that might be something you could add to your letter. But I don't know if that information has been compiled.
You will have to qualify it somehow other than we just want to reduce the port. And we got a statewide. It actually, working on the App Ready Consulting Services, our RFP, which Fred is familiar with, busy to review it. We have a copy of it. It's actually in this and in Mendon on the move about reducing the speed limit.
I think if you highlight problematic intersections with Meadow Lake Drive and Park Lane, and those are problematic intersections that we're concerned about. Both of them make the crash data for Route 4, including fatalities down at Meadow at Park Lane and the pass at that intersection. And highlight maybe the rising commercial aspect of our local Village District with several successful businesses having to deal with 50 mile an hour speed limits, which are frequently, are exceeded often. I think things like that would help initially, maybe get their attention. I did take the liberty of sending a Mendon on the move booklet up to Commissioner Secretary Flynn, just to kind of remind him that the town is pretty serious and been thinking on this for a while. So it's not just a spur of the moment effort.
The interesting part, and we discussed it at the meeting, and doubtless certainly all this, traveling either up or down Route 4 in Mendon, when you have to make, depending which way you're going, help if you're going to make either a right-hand or a left-hand turn, depending what lane, knowing that its speed limit's 50, which again is a guideline for some people. You know, I don't do it a lot. So I live up there, but I know any time I have to go up and do a right, I'm looking at my rearview mirror for a long time, just seeing who's behind me and what speed. And so it's a concern. And that's, we know that the speed limit's up there. Even it's 50 miles an hour, and that's, it's exceeded quite a bit.
And I'm pretty confident in this statistic. I believe on Route 4, with the exception of the four-lane part of Route 4 over here, that Mendon is the only town entirely that's on Route 4 across the state with speed limit through the middle of town is still 45.
Right.
Every other town reduces it sometimes as low as 25. So we're the only 45 mile an hour town on the entirety of Route 4 still, just as a precedent.
Yeah, when you're looking Bridgewater and Woodstock and...
No, I'm saying that's a good point.
So I think there's, I think there's some things you can highlight that, you know, might get their attention. And, you know, the fact that they got the booklet now and it's only a three-person group.
Well, I think it raises an interesting issue because in terms of making right and left-hand turns, those of us who live on Route 4, we know what that's like. Coming down from, coming down from Pyco, if you want to make a left-hand turn onto Water Grove or Reuben, it's just a one-lane, well, lane going down, two going up. And if there's out-of-state cars barely behind us, and we put our left-hand blinker on, if there's traffic coming up, we're stuck in the one lane waiting to turn left. You don't want to know how cars go around us. And now we have the intersection with the new Hitler's, and that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, so those will be highlighted in the sculpting study. But I think if we get their attention with the Village District, you know, 40 mile an hour quest, I don't think it's going to be, you know, it's not going to go the waste faster. And they may say we need more data.
And we also talked about the number of employees that will be working at the Green Mountain National Forest Building and visitors and tourists.
Right.
That's a lot of...
More traffic.
A lot more traffic stopping and turning in there. So, but that'll cover the sculpting study. You know, in there, I mean, just...
Just adding weather to the mix.
There you go, yeah.
It's terrifying sometimes when you're stuck, stuck there waiting to turn, right?
One of our criteria here was improved traffic safety and traffic patterns with corresponding actions to encourage speed limit reductions in the commercial and Village zoning districts. So anyway, we do have it documented in at least two places here. So we'll add that to the letter, so. Yep, and then again, we'll go back and forth and edit. And we can put you in on that, so. Which is probably a mistake, but I'll do it anyways. But you've got all the, you're going to come up with things that I missed. And again, we're going to be just talking about the Village District. All right, so in light of that, I'll make a motion to draft and sign with approval a letter addressed to Secretary of the Agency of Transportation, Joe Flynn, from the Select Board, requesting a speed limit reduction on Route 4 in the Village District of Mendon.
I'm just saying that.
All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. All right, we're down to E. Let me see if I... Yeah, E is zoning administrator. So as we know, we have an opening, as I mentioned earlier, under announcements for a zoning administrator. We do not have one at present. And so I sent a voicemail to Terry Ekerstone, Chair of the Mendon Planning Commission, earlier today, and haven't heard back from her yet. I'll call her when I get back this evening just to see what the process is now. Because normally, the position of a zoning administrator goes to the Mendon Planning Commission. They do the whole process of interviews, and they make a selection, and a recommendation is forwarded to the Select Board. I just want to see what process we're going to use now. And I know, again, Justin just told me, and you're on the Planning Commission, that you won't meet again until the first week in January. You're scheduled the first Monday, which is the second. But you might move, I'm sure. One of the questions that we did find out that, you asked the question, a person on the Planning Commission can also serve as a zoning administrator at the same time. So that's, yeah. So right now, Fred Bagley has submitted an email, which I have forwarded. He sent it to Terry, and I forwarded it to Val. He sent it to Terry and I forwarded it to Val and Sarah. Again, I'll talk to Terry to see how we go through this process. And is Fred has submitted his name and as an interim physician until April first of two thousand and twenty-three, highly encouraging us, planning commission slash select board to find a permanent replacement. So we have Fred. We have also had communication and Sarah has not been able to touch with Jeff Biazzuzi, who is an attorney. He's willing to step in as interim zoning administrator, but not do all the duties of the zoning administrator. So that's why I really think we need to run this by the Mendenham Planning Commission. So trying to jump on this, we're going to meet again in a week. We come back on the nineteenth, so it's not likely we can put this off too long. So we'll we won't take any action on this tonight, but I'll keep you in the loop talking to Terry. Be on the phone as soon as I you have any suggestions on that one? I mean, as far as procedure for this? I mean, it's kind of we got this opening and it needs to be filled, but normally it goes to the Mendenham Planning Commission first.
I don't know, maybe Sarah does. Whether it has to be more for on your agenda, the planning commission, can the planning commission do a Zoom meeting and just to consider one action, you know, in order to try to expedite the schedule or facilitate the schedule? Whether Terry could call the Zoom thing for this week, so it'd be that on your agenda next week. I don't know the answer to that.
Sarah, did you hear any of this?
So. Yeah, it is. It is a public meeting. So you can do hybrid meetings similar to the select board. Somebody has to physically be in the office in order to conduct a public meeting. But then the remaining members can be participate electronically. The process of appointing a zoning administrator is a recommendation is made by the planning commission to the select board and then the select board appoints. If they don't approve of the recommendation from the planning commission, they kick the name back and they have to make another recommendation.
I don't I don't I don't know if if you're going to be on January nine. If Terry I presume will move our meeting, the planning commission meeting to January nine. I don't know if can the planning commission make a decision on this at five fifteen and forward you for consideration at five thirty on the same day? I don't know if it has to be a gender and all that sort of stuff.
And so.
But I doubt there's going to be a lot of need for a position fill over the holiday season. So maybe putting it on to the January.
So you don't have your date set for your Mendenham Planning Commission, your first one of the year of two thousand and twenty-three? You just know it's probably that first week. I mean, your first Monday is January second, but that's the day after New Year's.
And we won't be here at eleven o'clock, you know, coming back.
All right, now you know, I'll communicate with Terry to see if she wants to do something in between and or wait until sometime the first week and then it'll be ready for us.
Well, you need twice a month.
Yes.
So you have the planning commission meets on January nine upstairs and forwards it to you for your second meeting in January. Maybe that's the best you can do.
All right, I'll talk to her because again, we'll we do meet January ninth. Yeah, to see what what they're thinking about that. I don't I know you've sent an email to her, but I haven't heard back. So I'll kind of give her a call and see what process we're going to do, make sure we do this right. So yeah, no action on that one. Uh, now we're down to the budget, our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget. And nothing has changed from our last meeting. I just went through this line by line, looking at anything that can be adjusted. So right now, this is a draft budget. Our total expenses, and this is our budget, is one million, three hundred and six thousand and sixteen dollars. And we've gone through, nothing has changed from the last meeting on the reserve funds. There was a discussion in the last meeting of maybe using some ARPA money to use in here somewhere to get this budget down. So currently we're at a three point seven percent increase. Val and I haven't discussed that increase yet. To me, that's needs to come down. And then I've gone through really line by line, and I think Val's probably done the same thing to see if there's most of things are level funded. And then in our column on the right, we can see where the increases in revenue and the increases in expenses. A lot of them are based on inflation. There's some things that we really can't do much about, other things we can. We just noticed, you know, jump around the public safety. We are reducing our let's see, our law enforcement income. We are reducing it in the next budget cycle by eight thousand dollars. So we're looking at eight thousand dollars less than revenue. We're going to check to see how they came with that number. But going across, they're actually, when you look at what was budgeted in the actual we're going back to two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, all the way up through, more was budgeted in revenue than what actually came in. One of Nancy's notes, you know, we just wanted to know why that revenue was down and why they're coming up with a reduction of eight thousand plus. One of her notes stated that our deputy sheriff is spending a lot of time with addressing complaints and different issues, which takes him off patrol. That was one of her notes. So it's not just a fifteen minute hour. It's probably at least an hour or so because there's paperwork involved. So that that's the only thing difference that caught me in public safety. The sheriff contract is gone up. That's basing on thirty-two hours a week, which they've recently been able to fulfill. Increase is gone up by three thousand and ninety-five dollars. And there was a reduction of five hundred dollars and then another increase adding five hundred dollars to the law enforcement reserve fund. So not a lot to do on the public safety. So we'll go back through, we'll start with administration budget history. So yeah, just trying to go through line by line by line to see if we can get this down. Sarah's, you have an opinion on what we could use ARPA funds for to reduce anything in the budget, preferably like reserve funds? So just just for instance, oh, let's see. So like new office equipment, we're talking about reserve funds now. Our current budget we're under, which is the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, the reserve fund budget was five hundred dollars. We're trying to understand how that got down to that amount. In the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four reserve fund, it's up to five thousand. So that's a forty-five hundred dollar increase. I talked to Nancy about this and she doesn't recall how the current budget got on to five hundred dollars in the reserve fund. She said she would never lower it that amount. I'm guessing by our current budget last year, when we were doing this, we were looking for a reduction. And she might have said, we don't plan on buying any computers this time. And maybe she reduced it down to five hundred, but nobody really recalls. So so that's an incident. If we used ARPA money for the new office equipment reserve fund, and that of course has to be allocated by two thousand and twenty-four and spent by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six would be no problem. Is something like that a possibility in your opinion, Sarah?
Okay, it is, but not in the way that you said it. So ARPA funds can be used for any municipal services, but it cannot be used to fund a reserve fund. So we can use ARPA funds to purchase computers, which would then alleviate the demand for putting as much money into the reserve fund to pay for it over time. It's a short term solution, not a long term. So as we increase the budget, it would alleviate it for the next upcoming years, but it wouldn't be a long term solution to reduce the budget.
Yeah, it would be one one budget cycle.
So we have a timeline of replacing computers. You know, over time, we replace a couple of them per year. So it would alleviate the need for that for a few years, but then we would be back on the regular timeline. You can't just take ARPA funds and deposit them into our reserve fund.
All right, so I'm just using this as an example and seeing what we can get out. So if we did reduce the new office equipment, you know, this is kind of a drop in the bucket to even four thousand or forty-five hundred, reduce it that amount. But again, just an example, then when we do our ARPA fund, we would allocate, make sure we allocate money for the computer fund or to buy computers.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm just looking for anything to to reduce the budget and it's a lot of this out of our control.
The computers, because they are kind of an expense that is rotating on a fairly short basis. Your computers are dependent on what you're using them for. But we're replacing computers maybe every five years on a rotating schedule. It's a very short term use for equipment. But if you took the ARPA funds and put them towards a more long term solution, that would alleviate some money in the reserve funds. It might be a better option for the town to pursue that type of thing like taking a hundred thousand dollars and repaving the road that you will not need to repave again for ten years or twelve years. So it's a longer term solution.
That makes more sense than new office equipment. So now we're back to the reserve fund and infrastructure. Just looking at those.
You do get a double whammy though, because you see a significant inflationary cost in construction. So you the demands on the funds for the reserve fund are greater.
All right, so I'll work, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just something that I'll have to take a look at to see if you allocated and did at least one road. Would that suffice or it could be inflation just eat it right up?
So under infrastructure, reserve funds, just for highway improvement in this budget we're working on now, we have a hundred and ten thousand, yeah?
Yeah.
So that's an example of using ARPA money, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Or looking at any of our reserve funds and see what projects we have to save them for to see if we can take them off with ARPA and then not fund the reserve funds to the greatest level that we are. I'm just not sure computers or new office equipment is the
Well, it's it's a small amount of money. I mean, it sounds like a lot, five thousand, but it doesn't.
Yeah.
When you recalculate everything, you haven't done much to the bottom line of the budget. All right, so this coming week, between now and our next meeting, maybe you and I can get together on the phone and work on these reserve funds using ARPA. And everything we talked about will get to Val. See if that'll help reduce that bottom line of what did I say it was? One million, three hundred and six thousand and sixteen dollars. My my goal, and Val, I want to jump in on this one, is to get that three point seven percent down. It just seems like for me a tough sum when last year, what, zero point seven was our budget increase? We had funds to move forward. We don't have that this year. We used those last year to reduce get the budget down to zero point seven. Say, sound right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So the only fund that you'll be going into this tax rate is if you under spend, you know, as of June thirtieth of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three.
June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, so we still have.
If we have a cash surplus as of the end of this fiscal year, it could be rolled into next year's tax rate.
Right.
Of two thousand and twenty-four.
You still, well, you still have six, six and a half months left on this budget.
Correct.
All right, so we'll work on that.
That's another thing that ARPA funds could assist with is if there are if there are grant opportunities that we're applying for that only need matching funds, the ARPA funds can be used for them. And then whatever we receive the grant funds for, maybe they'll just pick up a couple projects that we've been saving for. It's why it's so important to take advantage of every grant opportunity there is.
Yeah, there's a lot of them out there. Just trying to get them all is not easy. Okay, what do you think? What are you thinking? You mean, I can work? Any of us can work with Sarah on?
Well, I mean, it's just
Using the ARPA funds first, go ahead. Now we got to look at, you know, get every available source. Right now, I'm just trying to work on that, getting that percentage down. And you know, we discussed before, there are so many things that are out of our control. Increase in road solve, sand and gravel. Fuel is kind of the crystal ball one. Note, I mean, we know what our road solve is going to be. We know how much to use. That's an easy calculation, but something like fuel for both winter and summer, we absolutely don't know what fuel is going to be costing, so they've increased that.
What exactly is the state aid to highways?
Sarah, do you hear Val's question? Sarah, are you still with us?
I am, I'm apologizing, I can't find my unmute button. I didn't hear Val's question, what was that?
The state aid to highways, what is that exactly?
The state aid to highways is something that the legislature decides every year to help assist in the maintenance of the road. assist in the maintenance of the road. It's based on how many class one, two, and three roads we have. And last year was a significant bump, because due to COVID, they put some COVID money into the state aid to highways. We, we don't necessarily know what that number is going to be through the budget process.
And there could be some adjustments in January. So like the Rockland County tax, you know, we're budgeted for it here, but we never know the final figure till January.
Will you usually see those numbers the last week in December?
Last week in December, okay.
Yeah. So you won't know about it until your January meeting?
Getting back to fuel.
So there's a number of different things that have affected fuel over this past year, and that is both the price has significantly increased, but also that you were down one employee. So you're only running two pieces of equipment at a time. So hopefully, when we fill the third highway position, we'll be running at least three pieces of equipment at the time.
All right. So just fuel for winter, we're increasing that by $3,050. And fuel for summer, increasing by $1,500. That's, that's not much. And hopefully, we hit it right. Is that, that's something we have no control over, and that's just a guess at what fuel's going to cost? All right. I don't know what else I have. I've gone over this, and I've gone over it again, and then I wish all three of us could meet at the same time, and we can't do that. But, you know, word for word, we'll get it to you. So I can hear 50% of this coming up with the budget. So Sarah, while we, when you're feeling better, everyone's ready, we'll get together, and I'll get everything I think I need to look at the reserve funds and how we can reduce the amount of the budget and get the percentage down. And then whatever we come up with, get it to Val. So by our next meeting, which is only a week from now, we should be just about finalized with the budget. Does that sound all right?
Yes. Hopefully, I can take a look at that on Wednesday.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the budget? We'll keep hammering at this, and, you know, if we have to go into January, we can, but I think we'll be good by next meeting. All right. There is nothing else left on this agenda that I can see. I don't think I have any more announcements. I don't think so. I want to thank Fred Bagley for stepping forward for his only administrator. You will have to get paid for that, by the way, so.
Mostly the life of each child.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Do you want to make the motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn. Meeting at 5:55.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.